...to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ask for motion to approve today's agenda?
I move to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from October 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 16th as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of claims for payment for October 23rd.
I move to approve claims for payment, October 23rd, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eldora's request for financial support for community compliance efforts. We received a letter from the city of Eldora requesting the amount of $6,040.77 to offset administrative and transportation costs for the, to support the community compliance efforts in the communities of Alden, Union, Witten, Radcliffe, Hubbard, and Steamboat Rock.
Dave's here, you wanna?
You bet.
Thank you.
Morning, Dave.
Morning. I appreciate you allowing me to speak this morning. We had, we were part of the community placemaking efforts that took place last year as part of the economic development efforts with Cindy Litwiler, and we had an opportunity to speak with each one of the stakeholders in that meeting. We were part of each one of the towns that you'd mentioned. They requested our assistance. At the time, we had Jamie Koltoff was our person at Eldora in charge of community compliance. And really, each one of the communities had an issue with, with, with community compliance and code enforcement. And they thought that if we could clean up the towns, that would help bring more people in for, for economic development. So that was, instead of, instead of some of the other things that were suggested during the community, or creative placemaking project, one of their priorities was bringing in some community compliance. So that was why we had discussed, this was their priority. So at the time, Jamie, Jamie Koltoff was working part-time. And, and we had discussed, hey, why not have her just work an extra 10 hours, bring her on full-time, and then have her visit each one of the towns and assist with the administrative, assist with sending out letters, putting door hangers on people's doors, assisting with, assisting the mayors and the administrators with, or city clerks with a lot of the administrative work with community compliance. And then we worked with the city of Hubbard, which had already had some great codes in, in place. And we kind of brought them all together to where each one of the, each one of them were uniform. We did that great, we all worked together. Well, then, our Jamie quit. So then we brought on another Jamie, Jamie Witham, and we got, we brought that together. Well, then, now we're in, we're in the process of sending out 2080 agreements with each one of the cities, where we're gonna try to do one master 2080 agreement, 2080 agreement. Well, then we thought, what if, what if like Union or somebody decides that they don't want to be a part of it because they've already taken care of the problem? Well, then, our attorney said, well, let's just do individual 2080 agreements. And that would, that would help it. Well, the bigger, the bigger thing was, each, each one of the, each one of the communities can't really support like 5,000 apiece. So when, when you looked at the ratio, the ratio that Cindy Litwiler came up with at the time, that would still bring us, bring us short of what we needed to bring on, to have a full-time person in Eldora. So we had asked, we had, at that time, we had asked that the county would, would supplement that $6,040.77. So that would help, that would help each one of the other communities be a part of the 2080 agreement. Because at the time, we had also asked Ackley, New Providence, Owassa, and Buckeye to be a part of it as well. And they opted out. So, so then that left us with one, with the other people that did want to be a part of it. And here we are today. So we're just, we're requesting that $6,040.77 to continue to be, to continue to assist the other communities with community compliance, including the city of Eldora and other communities. And we're still willing to help all the rest of the communities as, as we continue with this endeavor and as we move forward. So thank you for allowing me to speak today. Any questions?
Thank you.
I, I do, Dave. So, and Ms. Witham, you can feel free to chime in. So are the standards the same in every community for length of grass and junk vehicles and all that? Or is there, do they vary?
For the most part, I believe they are pretty much the same, but I mean, they all have their own individual ordinances.
And so of the communities listed, which, so Alden, Union, Witten, Radcliffe, Hubbard, and Steamboat Rock, they all plan on participating? Okay. Because that's a change from, you know, earlier, where some communities of those didn't want to. Because I know Taylor was, Radcliffe.
So we focused, we mainly focused on three certain ordinances, kind of based around like people's maintenance of their property. And so that, we all adopted Hubbard's. That way, the compliance officer would only have to worry about one set of rules. So, you know, we weren't really focused on grass, you know?
Right.
But the, the things that we are focused on are all the same.
Okay. And I appreciate the individual 2080 agreements. I think that'll be easier to, you know, make sure that people are giving the proper support with the buy-in, both fiscally and sweat equity-wise from, at the local level. Yeah.
Is this a one-time asking, or is this biannual?
This is an annual asking, for economic development.
So is each of the cities putting in their $5.93 per lot?
Yes.
So they, okay, so each of those are paying that? It's just then there's a shortage?
Correct.
I would like to, I'm very supportive of this. I would like to see the 2080s and those signed with this individual community contributions, and then move forward at looking at supplementing.
Okay. Through the economic development, obviously, I'd like to go through Angela on this also. Just one, one thing, county does have their own ordinance coordinator, Jess in the back. And I guess if you're looking at doing all the communities and they're not buying into it, and we're still gonna take care of them, that's tough too. I understand your, where you're at on this, don't get me wrong, it's, it's a tough answer. So I guess if we're waiting to see the 2080s and everything, I would really like the other cities to participate.
Maybe they won't, too.
Yeah.
We didn't get 100% participation in the creative placemaking throughout the whole process either.
Yeah, the, the one thing that scares me a little bit about this is if we're gonna offset the 6,000, who's to say the next town doesn't pull out and now we're gonna offset that one? And then it just turns into a complete offer.
County operation.
Yeah, which we already have.
Right.
And I don't see, you know, some communities that have been engaged in the entire placemaking process from when Zach Manheimer was here, to the community marketing, to the community betterment activities that you were part of, you saw some drop-off from the start to finish. And, you know, certain towns don't have the resources to take care of those issues. But I think the ones that are steadfast, Eldora, Radcliffe, Hubbard, that have been at everything and been, had a lot of insight and input, are gonna stay, you know, strong through the process. But I would, I agree with you, Lance, I don't want to start picking up others that, you know, that won't want to be a part of it. Or if they say, we want it, but we want it for free, well, we're already offering Ms. Sheridan some of the nuisance, not all of it, but.
I just want to clarify that I only do stuff in uncoordinated manner.
Right.
Correct.
You're not the Witten?
Buckeye.
Right.
You have real plans to.
Yeah, and I have. Right, right.
Thank you.
And I ask, the reason for the one-time offer is because I, I think it's a good program and a one-time offer. You might get more buy-in from other entities. Asking for an annual offer, I don't think you're gonna get, they already got it for nothing now.
Right, right. And we may, we may go ahead and, and send out letters to them now anyway, and just say, hey, look, we, we're giving you an opportunity upfront, and if you'd like to participate, great. We just didn't.
And Iowa Falls obviously has their own time.
Correct, yeah. But we're, we're, the city of Eldora is definitely wanting to continue to collaborate with people to maintain those, those efforts countywide. So appreciate you allowing us to speak.
Thanks for coming, too.
Donna, do you have a question?
How different are these rules from the already established county rules?
I haven't compared the two.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that either, but I would say, I mean, I think, you mean their ordinances that they've passed as far as?
For this 180 nuisance properties, how different, Dave, would these rules be from what's already established in the county?
I'm not familiar with the county rules, just the city rules.
They each have their own.
Yeah, it wasn't that different.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, like they said, I think Hubbard had the most recent ordinance, updated ordinance. So I think the other towns that are mentioned here, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, they all went by what Hubbard had already passed, so that they're kind of uniform throughout those towns. And then the county has our own ordinance, of which Jessica maintains, you know, and addresses those problems.
I wouldn't say they're very similar in a lot of things.
I don't know what the Hubbard ordinance looks like, but I would definitely, the general nation say the county ordinance is less strict than the city one is. Because it's the county.
Right, right, probably, yeah. I haven't compared them, but I'm sure that's probably right. So.
Yeah, I, I would wanna, I'll just reiterate, I'm very supportive of the program, but I would like to see something in writing from the other communities that they're going to, you know, buy in and stay vested. Otherwise, you're gonna be back here in three months asking again, so.
We'll keep you updated.
Okay.
I would just ask.
I got a comment, too. So I haven't seen the 2080 yet, is there a termination clause? Like if you, I'd say put a termination clause and leave yourself a good amount of time so they can't just up and leave willy-nilly.
Will do.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Okay, utility permits and secondary roads.
No utility permits on the road, we're still patching concrete down on the county line. We'll talk about that in a little bit some more. Otherwise, yes, everyone's been busy, got another culvert done, so we're kind of trying to pull off our big projects now and just stick to little stuff because the end of the year's coming.
Right.
Snow stuff's on, we're ready if it snows tomorrow.
Good.
Yep.
Let's hope we don't need it.
Yes, like you're.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I could plug one more thing since Justin's here. Our railroad tract by Flint Hills, we've been calling them all year because we are not allowed to work within the railroad right away.
Right.
There's a big pothole, anyone that's been by Flint Hills knows about it. I called them again today because still nothing's been done. And I'm trying to make a plug for them to let us do the work. And, you know, they always want somebody there to make sure a train's not coming. I don't know why it has to be a railroad employee. Usually you can tell if the train's coming, but there is a phone number. Would you like it, Justin? I would like everyone in the world to call this number.
Sure.
And tell them that this needs done. Because, you know, we've called them multiple times and they, it doesn't seem to get through. So I feel like if they get 300 calls today, they might change their mind. The number is 1-800-848-8715.
Welcome to the railroad world.
Yes, they are very difficult to work with. The city of Iowa Falls has also gotten multiple calls about it, but they always refer them to the county instead of telling people to call the railroad to resolve. And it's just kind of a mess, nobody really understands who's in charge.
Right.
But the railroad has a bigger checkbook than the county, so.
Correct.
We're usually at their mercy. But I propose to them to let us do it, we would flip the bill, it would get it done.
All right.
Donna had a question, my friend.
Donna.
Okay, where's Flint Hills?
It's an ethanol plant on 140th Street on the southwest side of Iowa Falls.
What's the crossing number over there, Taylor?
Nice. I do, it's.
Because they're gonna want a crossing number and call them.
Okay, Donna.
And the, I'm obviously not familiar with that, what is the problem up there?
It's a railroad.
Yes.
It's a big hole in the road.
Large, large pothole, like the whole, almost the whole width of the road.
And working with railroad is at their speed.
Yep, and semis go over it every day to Flint Hills.
Working with railroad is their speed and we can't work in their jurisdiction without their permission.
Great. Anything else?
No.
All right. Resolution establishing the speed limit on county Highway S-75 between county Highway D-65 and 340th Street.
So this is our concrete road that's 45 years old, that just started crumbling all of a sudden when they closed Highway 14 and the traffic increased. So obviously BJ's very familiar with this road, so we've kind of been trying to talk what to do. Do we put an embargo on it, a speed limit? Because we talked, even once Highway 14 opens, are the trucks gonna go back to that road? It's hard to say. I mean, if they're traveling west, they might want to just keep using this. So that's why I kind of left the timeframe open. The nice thing about a speed limit as opposed to an embargo is sheriff's department could enforce it themselves. You know, embargo, you need motor vehicle and they gotta catch them, so.
90-day limitation on an embargo?
Oh, an embargo? Not if you did a resolution for it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's only if I do it without your permission.
Okay.
So, you know, and if the traffic does die down, it's supposed to open this week, but we've also heard that for the last three or four weeks, so.
Highway 14?
Yes. So, you know, it's hard to say. This would be a lot easier to set up too, because there's already posts, we can go out and just put a 35 mile an hour sign up. And we decided to just, that was Greg's suggestion, we decided to move it about a quarter mile north where we originally planned, just because they already slowed down at the town of Witten. So we thought, we might as well just keep them slow.
Yep. True. Donna?
What benefit then would a 35 mile an hour speed limit have as opposed to 75? What, what would be the benefit of that?
You would, the impact, I mean, you think about a fully loaded semi, the slower it goes, the less of that impact there is.
On a hole, on a, an already established hole?
So a lot of time, you know, like we have bridge embargoes, and if you ever want to allow somebody to go over, their rule is they have to go five miles an hour in the center of the road. So it's a proven fact that going slower reduces the impact. And I thought 45 miles an hour, that nobody's gonna actually slow down. But 35, you know, you're talking about a 20 mile an hour drop, that's when people pay attention.
Okay. All right.
Taylor, have you?
Until Highway 14 opens probably is how long this will last.
I'd let it go a little bit longer just to make sure that.
Break the habit.
See how long the traffic, or how much of the traffic continues on that road.
Because we spent a lot of time and money out there the last three weeks.
So.
Yeah.
And.
Are they going to resurface 14 next year?
Uh huh, so it's gonna be closed again?
Hopefully, they just keep one lane open, but they could still do the same thing.
Right. And Dave, you don't have any issues? I already instructed my son to use the field driveway.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution establishing a speed limit on county Highway S-75 between the county Highway D-65 and 340th Street.
I will second that.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate you looking at all the different options and looking at what, you know, one option would do compared to the other in terms of enforcement and, and changing behaviors rather than, you know, well, the short-term impact. So I appreciate that, Taylor.
Okay, roll call, please.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye. Okay.
Have we gotten anywhere in the Union? Those speed limits in Union?
Yeah, those should all be done.
Okay. I haven't seen them yet.
I think they are, yep.
All right. Motion to enter agreement with Elaine Ferrex.
Well, it's been a long time, but I'll make a motion to enter agreement with Elaine Ferrex as presented.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to direct, to direct the county attorney to prepare for board review a revised 2080 agreement with the city of Eldora regarding Green Belt Home Care. Daryl, do you want to address that, or?
I just want the board to authorize me to start working on that.
Okay, all right.
I'd make a motion to direct County Attorney Meyer to prepare a revised 2080 agreement with Green Belt Home Care and the city of Eldora.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd like to thank the city of Eldora for considering this also.
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to award the bid to enter the farm lease with Todd Germo.
I'd make a motion to award the bid and enter farm lease with Todd Germo in the amount of $285.01 per acre.
I will second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Set the time and date for a public hearing on a budget amendment.
Do we have a recommended time?
No. I think Jessica had a, listed a preference for the month. I mean, I think it, mid-November, if I remember correctly.
Can I remember it, time or?
I don't think she had a specific date.
No. I didn't know if we wanted to go into December. Last year, we had ours, the last meeting of the year. And I wondered if we wanted, with Christmas and New Year's being close to Wednesdays and observe holidays, maybe the week before that would give department heads plenty of time to get everything in? Or do we not want to push it back that far?
She asked that it be done in December.
Yeah.
Oh, December.
I remember December, so.
Glad you looked.
Yeah. I had had just a suggested date, December 18th, but.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to set the time of 10:02 a.m. on December 18th, 2019 in the large conference room for a public hearing on a budget amendment.
I will second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the lease agreement for the postage machine. This is, I think this is renewed, I believe it's every five years.
Yes.
With a new machine to be received during the, or at the beginning of each five-year period, so.
I'm making a motion to approve the lease agreement for the postage machine.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Application for use courthouse grounds. Maggie, do you want to come up and, or someone explain what you're proposing?
Well, my name is Maggie VanderWool, this is Leslie Carey. And we are working with a couple other gals, Jody Kirky and Kim Barron, and Wanda Estes, and probably a few others, but we're hoping to start a Christmas festival here in town on the first Sunday after Thanksgiving, hoping to make it an annual event. And Leslie has gone around and talked to a lot of the business owners, and they're planning to be open. They also, Leslie and Kim went and talked to the Chamber, and they are very excited about it and have ideas and things that they want to contribute. We have a lot of activities lined up, I can share them if you want, or we can just keep it short. But what we're asking for permission to do is set up a Christmas tree on the courthouse lawn. On, it would probably be a couple of days prior to December 1st that we would get it set up, but it would actually start being lit on December 1st. We just happened to run into Jody in the hall, and he, he didn't see a problem with it. And he also said there's, every other light pole has power that we could just plug into, and that those are on a timer to come on at dusk. So we would just follow that same timer.
Okay.
We have asked Norm Houston to help us get a tree and also to put it up so that he has a lot of knowledge in that to keep it secure and safe.
Yeah.
So, that's.
So when this permit starts December 1st, you want us to move that date?
Yes.
What do you want us to move it to?
I don't know that, we know that for sure, but it would, Friday, maybe, at the earliest?
The 29th of November?
Uh huh.
Okay.
So Friday or Saturday, I imagine we would, so we better go with Friday.
Yep, earlier's better.
Yep.
That'd be fine.
And then you do want it tore down before New Year's Eve?
Yes.
Okay.
What did I put on there?
The 30th, 30th.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the use of courthouse grounds with a change of November 29th at the beginning.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded, is there any other discussion?
I really thank you ladies for doing this. I've seen it be a positive thing for families and, you know, and economic development and tourism, so. I appreciate you ladies for taking the initiative and running with it, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, application for appointment of the medical examiner investigator. I received an email from Thomas Creighton, our emergency management director, asking to be appointed as a medical examiner investigator. I do know that was approved at the last commission meeting for that being part of his position as, he would be as a backup to the current roster, more or less, if no one else was available. You've been asked to do this once already because no one else was available. You've already had the training with the university. So that's less of an expense for the county right there, too, so.
I'd make a, not, a motion to approve the application for appointment of medical examiner investigator for Thomas Creighton.
I will second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a change of status in the assessor's office.
This is for Connie. She passed all of her exams and everything, so I'm moving her up to deputy position. Passed her final exam with the Department of Revenue here a couple of weeks ago, so.
Great.
They established that she can now be in the deputy. So I sent a copy from the Department of Revenue, and she's on their list, giving her the status.
That's great.
Should be put in at 70%.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Connie Mesh at a salary of $49,595 effective October 21st, based on the fact that she has passed the examinations through the Department of Revenue.
I will second that.
Any other discussion?
Congratulations for her hard work and.
Four exams to get there.
Yep, so, yep, I appreciate her dedication and loyalty to making that happen.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we also have a change of status for the conservation department.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for the conservation department. Danita, am I saying that right? We. Wheatley. Effective 10/21/19, she has resigned.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes. Her husband's taken a job in Southern Missouri, Wild Turkey Federation, and I wish him the best of luck in that direction.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Change of status in secondary roads.
Um, go ahead, Taylor.
Okay, so this is for one of our employees. We're going to be adding two motor graders during the winter. You know, that way everyone's got about 10 less miles to do. Hopefully help things get opened up quicker. Driving motor grader is an acquired skill, so we thought it was necessary for him to be paid, you know, at least close to what some of the other guys are getting. And it just didn't seem fair for the salary that he had to ask him to go above and beyond.
Okay.
So, this just kind of brings him in line with everybody else to that same job.
Okay.
This person's been running a grader when, case of absences as well, correct?
Yes, he mainly started doing it last winter.
And right now, he's our roadside mowing gentleman that.
Yep, he's our do it all.
Yeah, utility, okay.
We haven't found anything you can't do yet, so he's a good employee, you know.
Awesome.
Let's try to keep him around.
Right, good.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the change of status for Dale Schwark at the rate of 2086 an hour effective October 26, 2019.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comments. Yes?
I know there was a meeting earlier this week where proponents of the windmill companies met to give their side of things.
Could I interrupt just a second? Could you come up to the podium, please, for?
I have a speech, we have time for that, if that works.
Sure.
You guys go to that?
Yep.
You have to forgive me, I'm not much of a public speaker, but I think this is pretty important, so. Hello, my name is Isaac Knutson. I'm a resident of Hardin County. I was raised on a farm north of Hubbard and graduated from Hubbard Radcliffe School. I've lived in Hardin County my whole life and probably always will. I feel loyalty to the area and the people within it. In 2011, I built a house right off D-47 in the Tipton Creek Valley. I've always loved the area for its natural quiet rolling hills and pastures dotted with trees. However, this year I found out that could all be coming to a change. One day, a lady came to a door asking if I would be interested in having wind turbines on my property. Took the pamphlet and began doing what I always do and making a decision. Weighing the pros and cons, I came to the rational conclusion that it was not something I wanted to be involved in. Not only for my best interest, but for my neighbor and my community as well. After all, isn't that's why we're here to look after the best interests of people within this county? I do worry that some of us may be blinded by the promise of easy income and tax revenue while forgetting some long-term issues that will or may occur. Poor decisions are often made when focused on quick profit, so let's take a step back and look at some of the complications. First off, multiple studies have shown that up to 12% drop in real estate for homes that are within two kilo, a two kilometer radius can occur. This statistic alone should be proof enough that they are not ideal to live by. Secondly, windmills will create animosity and hard feelings within our communities, much like the height of the hog confinement area. Also, our secondary roads have been decimated this year, maybe more than any year past. I can only imagine how much worse they will be when the excavation equipment, cranes, cement trucks, oversized loaded trucks carrying blades and parts, and gravel trucks and installation crew trucks all start coming in on them. I know there are funds to offset this, but money isn't always the answer. Much like farming, you're often limited by weather, time, and resources fixing and maintaining those roads. I also find somewhat foolish to consume some of the best farm grounds in the world for development of economically uncompetitive structures. It is our county's biggest asset and farmers have been making and living on it for over 100 years. We should, should we really be erecting fat green energy structures on it? Do we also want to hinder the ability for aerial application of farmers? Not only the ones with the turbines on their land, but the operators on the other side of the fence as well. I'm concerned about the negative effect of wildlife as well. How many birds will I kill or change the migration routes of? How will the vibrations affect animals and the biology in the soil? How will this affect many of the sportsmen and hunters in this county? And last but not least, they're just unsightly to look at and listen to. I've talked to a few people in the southwest quadrant of the county that already have wind turbines and they do not enjoy them in their area. I've also talked to people in Adair and Madison County that have had them put up and they show regret. They say you can see the shadow flicker and that you can definitely hear them. I have a question for you supervisors. If a wind farm was proposed to go right through the middle of the Green Belt or the SAC and Fox Overlook, would you vote to allow that?
I, I don't think we have enough information to make a decision today.
Well, I'd like to believe you wouldn't. And if the answer is no, then why is it okay to disrupt the South Fork and the Tipton Creek areas? How can you justify to some people that having to deal with them in their backyard is okay, but not others? There's also a few potential scenarios and problems that I worry can or will occur. I have read multiple articles of wind turbine companies damaging or collapsing tiles and not fixing them, leaving repairs to those in the drainage district, not just for neighbors, not just for the person getting the, the turbine, but the neighbor on the other side of the fence as well, and the whole drainage district. It could hinder our future development in Hardin County. For example, I know the airport is looking to expand and has a direct conflict of interest with the wind farms. Personally, I would think Iowa Falls having a more reputable and usable airport would have more potential for growth of business than a group of windmills. Wind turbines may also be the deciding factor that keeps families looking to escape urban sprawl out of our area, as well as limit the construction of new homes for people already living in the area. Another concern I have is the infrastructure to connect the windmills to the grid. Does this mean we'll be getting large overhead power lines as well? Will neighbors and I be forced to have those on our land through eminent domain? And last but, but not least, I'd like to ask about the potential liabilities of these windmills. When the HEPSI subsidies run out, will wind farms go bankrupt? Then what? Will a new company step in not honoring old contracts and easement payments? As they age and become less cost-effective to maintain, will they sit idle, decaying for years, or will they be fixed or removed? Will the farmer be liable for removing them, or will all the taxpayers be put on hook for removing the massive structures? Will they follow the way the cornstalk bale piles that we have in our county already and be a monument to poor investment and decisions? Just last Tuesday, I started a petition and I already have over 100 signatures showing support against the wind turbines. Many of those signatures are people under 40, which are the future of this county. At the end of the day, you'll have to decide what list is longer, the positives or the negatives. I'm worried that opening up this floodgate to large corporations with 40-year rate easements is a rather large commitment that may open quite a few problems for our county. I think at least a moratorium is a good idea so we can have more people's input and do more research to the effects of these wind farms have had on other areas. Hope we can work together through this process and honest thought will go into deciding what is best for our county's future. Look forward to your feedback.
I'll just address a couple of things. It'll be reflected in our meeting minutes, but on Monday at 2 o'clock, we had a work session just on ordinance. And Hardin County has a current ordinance. And I would say 90% of your concerns were brought up. And so, but some of the facts, there was somebody here from E.ON and we asked, I thought, some fairly difficult questions, you know, when the project was going to start. And I think there might be some bad information out there, just like there is anything else.
Yeah, on both sides.
Right, exactly. And, and I don't want to discount your passion for this because I appreciate it. And to be honest with you, I need to take all that information in. We talked about the Green Belt. We talked about, you know, the drainage issues. We talked about the what ifs, if the sustainability of the wind industry wasn't there. Any of the tax subsidies, that ends at the end of this year. You know, how, they stated in a public meeting, they have 120 lease signings already. They've got everything they need, according to them. So, you know, those statistics were all put out there, you know, in, in the meeting on Monday. But knowing that, I think the most important thing is they don't plan on doing any work until 2022. Is that correct, Jessica? So, I don't want to rush into anything, but I want to respect your passion for this as well. And so knowing that we have some time, we can, Jessica's gone out and dug through numerous ordinances and we hope to craft an ordinance and have, get as much data as we can before we, you know, get into that.
I know the current ordinance, I'm not, not acceptable.
And it's from 2012 and, yeah. And so, I, I think it's something that we need just time and allow more Isaac Knutsons to come in and discuss this because this is one of the development issues that there is local control.
Yeah.
So, I respect your opinions and, and the information and I look forward to ongoing discussions.
I've talked with, she's a supervisor actually in Madison County. I just talked to her on the phone this morning and she's been dealing with them and she's had, it just sounds like a nightmare. So she's willing to come up here maybe next Wednesday.
And I, and I sit on a commission with the one gentleman that was the dissenting vote from Madison County. And, you know, I'll see him tomorrow and I plan on picking his brain as well, just to see what the rationale and stuff was. So I think you're in good shape with Lance and Renee and I to go out and gather our information and make, you know, a decision.
As we're rewriting the ordinances, those are public meetings. It'd be nice if you were there also.
Yeah.
I, I know you want that moratorium, but if all else fails, at least you could point out some of the hard points that you want in the ordinance itself.
Okay. Yeah, I can do my best.
Yeah.
Sometimes we have.
Right. And I don't know if you're, yep, and I don't know if you were on the email list when the agendas come out. I mean, okay, Angela can help get you on the email list, so when, every week you'll get an email, what the agenda is, if we have to add a meeting or something, you'll get that notice. But we even talked about, you know, we will have to have some public meetings, not to make necessary decisions, but get input. And I'm sure the wind companies will come in and do their best and, you know, the opposing groups will have theirs. And so, it's, that's one of the great things about America.
Yeah, well, like I've looked on Beacon and I've, I can see who's signed easements.
Right.
Kind of in that area and that's the area you hit, which is actually my area. And majority of people in my area do not want them.
Yeah. And then I, and, and like you say, then there's the people that'll tell you they don't want them and are adamantly opposed, but they see the paycheck and it's an easy paycheck to take.
And that's, the, the people that have signed easements, that is all they see.
Yeah.
It's the most easy moment.
Yeah. But might not be so easy in the future.
That's hard work.
Right. So, but I appreciate your passion and commitment to, you know, doing your due diligence, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Can I have a copy of that before you leave?
The petition?
No, your statement that you read.
Yeah, maybe we can get somebody to take a copy of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Isaac, you just want to wait?
He, he can have these.
Okay.
I have it.
All right.
Oh, all right.
If you guys want to make copies of that, we can do that.
I'll wait till you file it.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, thank you, Isaac.
Thank you. Okay, no other public comments? Is there any other business? Jessica?
Today was supposed to be the day that we gave our recommendation for the corner pork site, but they still haven't gotten their floodplain determination back from the DNR. And so I spoke to Kent Brown and we asked for another 30-day extension in the DNR office and they would grant it that additional 30-day extension. So we can look for something soon maybe.
Okay. Good to know.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other business? Not? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.